Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the special city council meeting for Tuesday, March 27th. And, uh, city attorney, do you have anything to report out from those meetings?
No.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of Folsom City Council and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council again for Tuesday, March 27th. The clerk, please call the roll.
Council members Howell.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. You picked a really good evening. I hope to have you out here in the next 30 seconds, so it's a short meeting. With that, um, do we have any agenda update? And the city clerk?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay. Call the next item, please.
Your first item tonight is scheduled presentation item 5A. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming April 8th through the 14th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Folsom.
Okay, it's my honor to ask Commander Hillman, Andrea Taylor, dispatcher of the year for 2017, and Tina DeWater, dispatcher customer service awards recipient for 2017. If you'd meet me down here at the microphone, I have something to present to you. Cool. So Rick, why don't you have you come over here as well, so we have our person giving his pictures here, and he can squeeze in here, we won't bite. Today is Tuesday. Yeah, we only bite on Wednesday, so you're good. So, anyway. Commander, why don't you hold that so everyone can see as I read this to you. So it was my honor on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the community of Folsom to proclaim National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the city of Folsom, whereas the communication dispatchers of the city of Folsom are responsible for answering incoming calls for emergency services and dispatching assistance to help save the lives and property of our citizens. Whereas Folsom's communication dispatchers are a vital link to our police officers, monitoring radio activity, providing information, ensuring their safety, and whereas the safety of our emergency responders is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call the city of Folsom Public Safety Answering Point. And whereas in 2017, Folsom's communications dispatchers handled more than 104,000 telephone calls, dispatched more than 58,500 events, and in 2017, Folsom's communications dispatchers answered 98.9% of all 911 calls in 15 seconds or less. Let's take a moment, give them a round of applause for that one. Awesome. That was really awesome. Whereas Folsom communications dispatchers contribute substantially to apprehension of criminals, and whereas Folsom's communication dispatchers exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore I, Stephen Miklos, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, and I want to say to ours community as well, do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through 14th, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Folsom, and extend our gratitude to Folsom communication dispatchers for their dedicated service to our community, their diligence and commitment to keeping our city and citizens safe. Proclaim this 27th day of March, 2018. So congratulations. To that. Commander, can you say a few words on behalf of one of the ladies? Or all three of them? Come on, don't be shy, you talk on the radio all the time. You're both award winners, so we're gonna make you both speak. There.
It's an honor to serve the city of Folsom Police Department and the citizens. Everybody that calls mostly is not happy or needs something from us, and so it's a rewarding job because you're actually helping people every day, and it's my pleasure to do so.
We should appreciate it very much.
Thank you. We definitely couldn't do it without everyone being as capable and helpful as they are, so we appreciate the recognition.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, again, thank you very much for a job well done, time in and time out. So with that, clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is scheduled presentation item 5B. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming April 6th through the 14th as Creek Week in the city of Folsom.
Okay, I've asked Vice Mayor Sheldon to do the honors, so.
And, uh, well, Ms. Austin, turn it. Sure. She is. Your voice is good. If you're 83, you can walk it along, you're doing okay, I guess. It's not my day. You set me up, Steve, I know that. You know, I mean, we just, we ride around them, we wait in them, we do fishing them, we do everything. So this is a great one to make a presentation. So today, tonight, I'm making a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming April 6th through 14th, 2018, as Creek Week in the city of Folsom. Whereas the Sacramento Area Creek Council, and I didn't know this, is a nonprofit organization working to preserve, protect, and restore urban streams and the riparian habitat, and whereas urban creeks, including Whirl, Humbug, Hinkle, Linda, Alter, Goat Creek, in the city of Folsom, are an important amenity in our community, yes, providing recreation, wildlife habitat, and many other benefits, and whereas Folsom creeks flow into the American River as an important source of drinking water, fisheries, and recreational resources for the region, and whereas action we take to promote creek health also benefit rivers, our rivers, and whereas citizens are being called upon to be a part of an area-wide volunteer effort to improve and enhance our urban waterways by cleaning trash, that's a big job, and debris as well as removing invasive exotic plants, and whereas the city of Folsom is a platinum sponsor of the Area Creek Council Creek Week activities, helping to cover costs to publicize the event and provide lunch to volunteers, providing staff to guide and assist citizens with the April 14th, 2018 cleanup of Folsom area creeks, collecting and disposing of debris and providing other material and services as needed, and whereas the Sacramento Area Creek Council has designated April 4th through 16th, 2018 Creek Week in the Sacramento region. Therefore I, Ernie Sheldon, for Stephen L. E. Miklos, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through the 14th, 2018, as Creek Week in the city of Folsom, and we call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the activities, fun, and adventure during this special week, and set aside to benefit our creeks and our rivers. Proclaim this 27th day of March, 2018, signing by our mayor, Stephen Miklos. I'm gonna add a little bit, because, you know, the creeks, it's a big job, but our creeks, in fact, I ran into a gentleman Saturday at a event I was at, and he told me how he loved Hinkle Creek, and that he sat there, this guy was about six foot three, ex-marine, submariner, and what was his joy? Watching birds. He sat there for hours, and he could creek, and that's what he loved. So, you know, you got, you know, a good thing going, and groups like you is what makes it happen. Say something.
Thank you very much for the recognition of Creek Week. We have over 200 Folsom residents that have already registered to volunteer for the cleanup on the 14th. Folsom loves their creeks, and we run the annual Creek Week event. This will be our 28th year countywide, and Folsom, you guys have the, you take the best care of your creeks of any jurisdiction in the county, and there's more community pride, and you get a lot of volunteers every year, and you have the least amount of trash to get out of the creeks, because you guys, you take such good care of your creeks already, so. And we love the partnership, we work with the Parks Department, and combine it with the Trails Day event, and we get help from the stormwater people, and they provide equipment for us, and so it's a great partnership, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations for the wonderful partnership and all the work you guys do for, on behalf of the residents, we greatly appreciate it. So thank you, have a good evening. So if the clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is business from the floor. You have two requests to speak tonight. The first is from Melissa Nickel, the second is from Coco Kokazella.
Okay, so Melissa, you're up, right down here. Rick, could you move that one microphone off to the side again, so she can use the podium? Thank you. Oh, that's all right. Good evening.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
And council, thank you. I just wanted to ask your help. Me, myself, and some worker at the park and the zoo have noticed a problem with homeless in the park at the zoo. Drug use, littering, and it's concerning because of the children and the families, and I feel especially, I'm compelled to talk to you guys about it, because I'd noticed these people hanging out on the property that I moved into in September, and I reported it to my landlord. The first week I lived in this apartment, it was broken, somebody tried to break in the window, and the police were baffled, and I haven't been able to sleep since, really.
I don't blame you.
And.
If I may ask, go ahead and compose yourself. May I ask, so what, which park do you see it the most at? You're talking about the one right here, next to the zoo? Okay. The reason I say it, because we have, obviously, one of our commanders and several officers here, they're taking note as well as what we can provide to kind of do some. Do you have a particular time where you see them more than others?
Well, I honestly, I walk a lot because of my dog, and I enjoy the nature out here, and I work downtown for the Secretary of State, so I take public transportation. So it's, what I see loitering in your park over here is usually during, in the morning, on the weekends when I walk there.
Okay.
A lot of times, early in the morning, you can tell they've slept there, and they get out before anybody comes. But I also see men going in the women's bathroom with homeless women, which I find very disturbing, because children and families are getting ready to come to the zoo. There's so much trash, and it's not done by any of these families or any of these children that come in here. It's cigarettes, it's alcohol bottles, it's stuff that I see, I see them walk across to the Circle K and come back and eat, you know, food and litter it. But the park worker and the zoo worker that I talked to, because I just wanted to start talking to people, because I thought it was just me, and they said that they've, you know, the park workers complained to the supervisor, and they came out and told him to leave because there's heroin needles and other things. His name is Hakim. He told me he would support me and talk to you guys, or, you know, whoever, and the superintendent has come out. Those men have moved on, but the people that, there were people found squatting, my landlord found people squatting, two tenants got evicted this month for housing these homeless people, and they're drug addicts, they're heroin, meth addicts. One of the tenants, it was her daughter, that was living there for I don't know how many years, and she wasn't supposed to, because she has a criminal drug record. She doesn't have a driver's license, she drives around town in a car. So, I mean, it just, walking around in that park, it's beautiful, and I just can't stand these people around, around these children, but knowing that they could have broken into my house and what they were gonna do, I have no idea. I live by myself, I have a dog, thank God.
Okay.
But I just, thank you.
No, before you go, so right behind you, there's two of our finest right there.
Yeah.
Can you give them, can you give them your contact information?
Yeah.
Because they want to get more details from you.
Yeah.
And rest assured, they heard everything you said as us, as much as us.
And thank you to the dispatchers here, because I know that I've probably talked to them and the police, because they've been wonderful.
Yeah, well, thank you. And thank you for coming down.
The only thing, the only thing that if, I don't know if it's gonna make you feel any better or safer, but I think the probability of homeless people watching the council meeting or having access to Channel 14 on Comcast is unlikely.
Well.
So if you're being identified, I don't think it's from talking to city staff.
Well, I'm being threatened because of the tenants, they know that it was me. So I was threatened in Limby Park, they've moved on to Limby Park, they can hang out there during the day as well.
Yeah, we, and PD knows that one.
I reported that this weekend, yeah.
Was it you that sent me the email that I forwarded on to PD? I got one over the weekend, I sent it on to the police department.
I didn't email, I emailed when it first started, when I moved here. I called the police when I was at the aquatic center on, I think it was Sunday, when they confronted me.
Because they, they've gotten a couple that I've sent over there, so we're watching as well, but.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And I, put the police dispatch number in your phone.
It is.
Those gentlemen right behind you will wave down so they can get some more information from you.
Thank you.
Especially given what you just said about the threats, that's something they want to know too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Coco Kokazella, and Coco was followed by Greg Marasso.
Hey, I'm Coco Kokazella, a resident of Midtown Sacramento. I work at Intel in Folsom. By choice, I don't have a car, so I ride the light rail to work, and I take the, either a Placer County bus up the hill from the light rail station or the Folsom Stage Line. I'm here to request increased frequency of the Folsom Stage Line. I don't know if this is an RT request or a Folsom request, so I'm here. I also attend RT meetings and sit on some transit advocacy boards and forums, so I'm super interested in things that relate to transportation equity and how communities grow and flourish with good transportation options, and like I said, I by choice use public transportation, because I find driving very stressful. But the point is, it's rather hard to take the train and then a bus, because the bus only comes once an hour, so if one isn't on time for that bus, it's, you know, you're kind of screwed. You have to wait for the next hour to get the bus up the hill. So the Stage Line Loop, the number 10, if it could be increased from a cadence of an hour to half an hour, which would meet the train, that would be awesome.
So you're talking about specifically like morning commute, afternoon commute, couple hours frequency, in other words, increase the frequency maybe during the commute morning times and also the afternoon commute times?
That certainly would help, yeah.
Okay.
Because the train, the train arrives and leaves on the half hour.
Right.
Basically, so, yeah, it would be, it would really make, you know, commuting quite a bit easier to be, to have the choice of riding the train every half an hour instead of every hour. Of course, I can take the lift from the light rail station, I'm not destitute, and I'm not without choices, but I'm, I'm trying to advocate for, you know, a holistic public transportation experience, and that's, that's just part of it. I would, I think it would also be great to have things like extended light rail service, especially on days when Folsom Lake College has an event, you know, and increased bus service to and from events, so that, you know, those of us who live in Midtown could come out here and, you know, avail ourselves of that kind of thing. So anyway, these are, I'm, yeah, I'm just, I'm very interested.
That's something that we've been, we've been talking on and off to RT about that since Light Rail opened.
Yeah, so I think that part's coming, just real quickly, then the, what would you say the window for commute hour in the morning would be that would be most helpful, especially for folks that get off, start and stop around the same time you do? And then it would be afternoon?
I would say, a guess from the colleagues that I see on both light rail and the bus, probably seven to nine. So our meetings are heavy in the morning between seven and nine AM, and then we're leaving between four and 6 PM in the evening. I have quite a few colleagues who live in Midtown and who drive, and who have expressed interest in public transportation, but tell me I'm not gonna, because, you know, I can't deal with this, you know, once an hour thing. It's real hard.
No, I don't disagree, that's why I asked you what the condensed timeframes are, because it's a lot easier to pick a window versus, like you said, holistically change the entire route of bus stand.
Yeah.
But if we can make some tweaks during commute times, that's one of the things we're interested in.
That would be awesome. Yeah, that would be a great start, because I think you'd, you'd see an interesting artifact from that increased ridership potentially, and more interested in the whole experience and, you know, see what happens from there.
And we'd like nothing more than people actually riding the bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I advocate for it all the time. Like I said, there's people interested, they're just real shy about the scheduling dilemma.
And is that something that you've ever brought up to the folks at Intel?
Yeah, they've suggested I come here.
Okay.
Well, we, we work real well in the partnership with them, so this is, this is why I asked you to condense timeframes, because that's one of our people, our partners we are working with.
I hope you have a ride, because you're gonna miss that last train.
I know. I was prepared for that mentally.
Thank you for sharing this.
Thank you, thanks.
You so much. If you want to email us updates anytime you want, that would be appreciated, because we keep, keep doing this.
Okay, cool.
We welcome it, actually.
Oh, I'm willing to keep talking about it, yeah.
Keep sending, if you keep emailing us, that's fine, we're actually open to it.
Mayor, just, and I'm, of course, Coco, Coco has frequented our regional transit board meetings, always kind of brings a clear message and stuff, so you did come to the right place, and, you know, we appreciate hearing that. And we're undergoing just the beginnings of a major route optimization study for the whole of regional transit, and there have been discussions here as far as extending service and things like that, so your comments are timely and you came to the right place.
Oh, cool. Awesome. Great, thanks for the comments, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I have one other question. How are you taking Placer County bus?
Oh, that is interesting. I use the connect card, and the number 50 Express stops at the Iron Point Station, also on the hour, and leaves us off right in front of Intel.
I didn't know we had Placer County buses in Folsom.
Should I choose to do that instead of the 10, yeah.
Yeah, the connect card allows them to go in later, seeing now.
They basically come at the same time, but it's like five minutes earlier, and it gets me to meetings a little bit earlier, so I choose that sometimes.
Interesting fact, it took us five years to finally get that connect card going.
Really? Yeah, that thing is cool, actually.
Yeah, because I saw it on Seco, it took us five years, because every time we get closed, technology would change, and we'd do it, right, Mark?
Yeah.
And then technology would change, and Mark had to live through it as well, so we're glad it's now working, for all the reasons you just said, you're able to use a connect card and just interchangeably with no hiccups.
Yeah, I used it up in Roseville the other day, so it was, it was really great. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Coco. Okay, next speaker, please.
Your next speaker is Greg Marasso.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, council, thank you, mayor.
Sure.
So, I'm here to talk about flooding, surprise. Basically, my name is Greg Marasso, and I live over on Cerito Drive in the Rancho Diablo area, and I live on the west end of Cerito Drive, and I'm just bringing to the council and the mayor's attention that we've been having a lot of flooding in that area for the past couple decades. This last, you know, Thursday, I believe, we had tremendous amounts, I think it was the highest we've ever recorded. I supplied some pictures over there for you, some before and after. We had about four feet in the center of the, center of the street for about a block. We had four or five homes that were flooded in front, and this also occurred, as you can see on one of the photos, back in 2015 in May. So this is not just a big storm cell that came through and, you know, an exception, but it's something that is ongoing, and I just wanted to come to here tonight and just let you know and address it, and see if we could take some action into investigating this a little bit further. As you can see on the map, there are only two drains in this one block area, or half a block area, that supplies, probably about drains about, let's see, about 12 or 13, 14 homes. What's been going on is back in the late 90s, this was addressed, and I believe in 2000, it was addressed, and they actually went in and expanded the pipes underneath, and that helped for a while. And then around 2014, 2015, this came back. We had huge cells come through Folsom and just wall up our area, and then this came back again. I talked to the residents in the neighborhood that have been living there since the 80s, and they said they've never seen anything like it. This last surge that came through was the highest. As you can see on, there's a power box, it was about a foot from being covered completely, probably potentially knocking out all of our power in the neighborhood. A lot of our, my biggest concern, of course, is safety. We were trapped in our homes for four hours. My daughter could not go to school until 12 o'clock in the afternoon. We have elderly people that live on that street, they'd be totally trapped unless a boat came in. Not sure if emergency services could, could get there quickly, that's a huge concern of mine. The second is obviously homes, home damage, drainage from our backyards, we, it needs to go somewhere, and it'll go in our front yards. So I'm just, basically just wanted to address those issues, to see if we can take any further steps into looking into this drain. I have a feeling, last year, actually, I called the city and let them know about the drain, because I was still concerned about it. They did, they came out, inspected it, said it was all fine. We always keep eye on that one drain, because it's our, it's our savior when it comes to lots of rain that comes through the area, so we're definitely babysitting that drain fully. So I'm just, I just wanted to ask all of you if there is something that the city can do a little bit further into making sure that this won't happen again, or this will, we can, you know, keep this, keep this from happening again, or help.
The news is, coming down this evening, the appropriate people are in the room that are taking notes, so I'm maybe have you meet with Mark and just give him direct contact information, so he can have his people, this gentleman right here, and then he can look into, because, you know, what, I mean, I'm not gonna address what just happened last week, because that was a highly event, but what disturbed me the most is that if we're looking at drains, and they're still seeming clear, and something's backing them up, so we have to figure out what's going on, so we're happy to do that.
Yeah, and.
And by the way, I do appreciate, I know the city manager does as well, we don't know everything, so we actually invite people to come to the city and let us know what's going on, because we can't be everywhere all the time.
Right.
So I appreciate you, seriously, I appreciate you doing, coming down and giving us, these photos are very dramatic, so that'd help us, again, pinpoint areas of the city we have concerns, so we will make sure somebody comes out and starts taking a good hard look at what's going on out there.
Great, great, thank you.
Because this is unusual.
And, and one other note I forgot to add is, we've had a few neighbors actually witnessed during heavy rains at certain times of the year, and during the winter, actually water coming out of the drain. So it's, apparently, it's, maybe that's evidence that the drain just can't take the, you know, the amount of, you know, pressure or the amount of homes that, or maybe it's development, I mean, I don't know, I have no idea.
Folsom's been a long time, because that was where I first lived.
Right, right. I'm not sure if there's anything draining further into that area, or just, we're just.
Well, it gives us, it gives, with those pictures, it gives these guys a real good indicator of, okay, so here's the issue, and work around, because other, other than just saying, hey, this is what happened, they can see it.
Right.
That's a big difference, so thank you for doing that.
The only other thing that you need to keep in mind with regard to what happened on Thursday, we had that issue all over town. Part of the problem is that when, when we, when we do designs, either whether it's the city or the development community, with the city approving it, there's what's called a design storm, and typically, you're designing for a storm that has a probability of happening once in 10 years to once in 20 years. Last Thursday morning, between about 10 minutes of five and 20 after five, we got one inch of rain in a half an hour, which is two inches an hour, that's probably a 200-year storm.
We had, three years ago, there was about three quarters of an inch in a half an hour, so they're very similar, and people were flooded back in 2015, so this is not a one and 20-year storm, it's definitely a one, three-year storm.
No, I'm, no, but, no. This is a probabilistic number, so, you know, you could, we could have a whole long conversation about whether there are other factors that are influencing the frequency with, with which these storms of high intensity take place.
Just when severe storms are here, you know, and it's, I feel like in this area, it seems like that storm drain is, you know, it's.
So you're on edge every time a storm comes through.
Acting, exactly.
Yeah, we know it.
Exactly.
Please see Mr. Rack of Ann Arbor before you leave, so you can get direct contact information.
He's got, Mark's got those pictures.
You do have it?
He passed along, so Mark's got those.
And he's got your pictures, too.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, my pleasure. Thank you for letting us know.
Yep.
Okay, next person.
Your next speaker is Rajesh Ganeshan.
I'd like to inform the city of Folsom of a historic opportunity, world-renowned humanitarian peace ambassador, and the founder of the Art of Living Foundation, Sri Sri Ravi Shri Sri Ravi Shankar, will be visiting the Sacramento area. And for the first time on April 16th, we'll be holding what's expected to be the largest meditation event in the history of the Sacramento region. Shri Sri has been instrumental in many peace processes around the globe, including in Colombia, where he negotiated peace between FARC and the Cambodian government, between Shia and Sunni factions in Iraq, to name a few. His techniques have brought peace and made a positive impact to more than 350 million people around the world. Art of Living has been operating in Folsom for more than 10 years now. Having taught hundreds of people how to lead a happy and healthy life, I invite the City of Folsom to take advantage of this opportunity and participate in what would perhaps be the largest meditation event in Sacramento. Thank you.
Well, wonderful. Thank you.
Where are they having it?
At the Memorial Auditorium in Sacramento, yeah.
I was going to say, I went to your opening, and that's, that's not a venue where you could invite thousands of people.
That's true.
What time is, what time is the event?
7:30 to 9:30 PM on April 16th. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Appreciate it very much. Any further?
You have no additional requests to speak.
Okay. So, would that move on to the next item?
The next item is your consent calendar.
I'll move consent, and I'd like to pull item H.
And I'll pull item C, please.
H and C. Okay. So, you're moving, then Carrie the balance.
Yes.
Okay. So, and we've got a second, so call a roll on those items.
Councilmembers Howell.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Item C, if you'd read that one off.
Item C is ordinance 1282. This is an uncodified ordinance approving Amendment Number Two to the First Amended and Restated Tier One DA between the City of Folsom and TNHC Russell Ranch LLC relative to the Russell Ranch subdivision project. This is to be second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Roger?
I didn't say that. I just wanted to vote it separately.
Yeah, that's fine. I assumed that. I had it written down. Okay, so I'll go ahead and move that item.
I'll second that.
And call a roll, please.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And item H, please.
Item H is Resolution Number 10,100, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an Amendment Number One to the reimbursement agreement with Katz Kirkpatrick Properties for the frontage improvements along East Bidwell Street at 1578 Creekside Drive.
And I'm going to recuse myself because they are a client of mine. Okay, I will move item H.
I'll second it.
Got a motion to second. Call a roll on item, please.
Councilmembers Howell, I'm sorry, councilmembers Moran.
She tried to trick me.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes.
Howell is recused.[1335.24][1335.24](LAUGHING)
You tried to trick me, Krista.
Caught it, didn't you? Okay, next item.
Next item is city manager reports.
Mr. Palmer, you're, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Plenty of things going on in the number-one place to raise a family, but I'll just call out one in particular because this is also a sports town, as we're, as we all know. And as high school basketball and college basketball season winds down, it is now time for beach volleyball. And as many of you know, our Livermore Community Park is the home of the Sacramento State Hornets' beach volleyball team, and they are hosting the Big West Beach Volleyball Challenge at their home court here at Livermore Park.
Oh, wow.
And that's the weekend...
That because we're the 23rd-best beach town in the U.S.?
Yes, it is. And beach volleyball follows right along. And so, that is Friday, March 30th through Sunday, April 1st. And you can generally catch teams playing out there representing Cal Poly, California State University Bakersfield, Long Beach State, Cal State Northridge, and Hawaii. And so, looking forward to hosting all of those young people playing their sports. And go Hornets!
Okay. We'll do council comments next. Mr. Moran, start yours.
You know, I can't top, top the beach volleyball, so I will say good evening, but that is cool. I like that.
Carrie?
Just the usual warning, I'm not convinced that it's done raining yet, so I just encourage all of the residents of the City of Folsom to understand that it could rain again. And if you see a big puddle, please go around and go a different way. It's way better than destroying the engine in your car or putting our public safety folks, both police and fire and public works staff, at risk. Please drive carefully and stay off of your phone while you're driving.
Okay, Roger?
Just wanted to thank Folsom Fire for letting me ride along last week. It was absolutely amazing to see. Unfortunately, I got to see a house fire, so that was unfortunate fact. But the amazing fact with that is seeing Folsom Fire at work and their response to it, so it was great. I wanted to also give a special thanks to Folsom PD, Folsom Fire, and the City of Folsom, especially Brian Reed for the flood incident over at East Bidwell and Montrose. I saw Brian waiting in water, shoulder-high, getting folks out of their cars. So, it was amazing to see the response to that, too. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roger. President Sheldon?
Well, on Saturday, I had the honor to go and speak to a group of submariners, and most of them were back in the, a few in World War II, but mostly around the Korean era and up to pretty current. It's the U.S. Submarine Veterans Gold Country Base in Sacramento, California, but they're one of the, I can't tell you, it's the only base, is our, our veterans all, but it's one of them. And it, it was an honor. They treated me extremely nice. They're very proud of Folsom being part of Folsom, and they, they've been here three years. And the first year, they were in our veterans parade, and they happened to win the best cause, because they have a submarine float, which is very neat. They promised me they're coming back this year. They've been AWOL for two years at some of the parades, but they're coming back this year.
You're calling veterans AWOL.[1551.82][1551.82](LAUGHING)
Well, veterans could be AWOL. I mean, you know, they're supposed to be in our parade. If a veteran doesn't show up, he's AWOL. I call it like it is, you know? However, it was, it was really, as long as I've been around here, in this town and everywhere, it's, it's great to listen to people run their own programs and see how close they relate to a lot of things that we do. They had kids programs, they had hospital programs. It's a lot of overlap, but it's all necessary, and they all do a great job. And so, I was really encouraged in, in the, in the titles that they have. The chief of the boat, that's like the sergeant major in the military, he's a senior enlisted man. They call him the chief of the boat. The base commander is basically the submarine commander. And so, a lot of these things, I never knew in all the years I was in the military. But it's quite known, and, and talking to this city manager, going to find out, he has a history in his family with his dad and so forth in the submarine. And it's quite interesting that you just don't know where you run across things like this. But I brought their hat to show you they, they're proud. One thing, I was a little bit out of touch, and Steve will understand this, Navy people don't take off their hat inside. Most other services, especially Air Force, you go inside a building, you take your hat off and keep it off. So, for about the whole hour and a half or two hours, I was the only one there with my hat off. But it's just little things that you find out, how enjoyable. And as I said in my presentation tonight, one of the big guys came up to me and thanked me for the city on the Hinkle Creek and the bridge and, and being able to sit out there for hours on end and just watch and enjoy nature. And he's a bird watcher. So, you never know, you know, what you find. So, I say, if you ever have an opportunity to visit some other organizations and nonprofit or whatever, to find out what they do, I'm sure it's going to be very enjoyable. So, this was a very good night.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm going to hold off on the update of our Washington, D.C. trip because I know Marcus and I want to put together some notes. But Marcus and I were in Washington, D.C. last week, so while you guys were getting flooded, we had a little bit of rain and a mini blizzard, so we, we survived. But I, I'm going to wait and get the, the better update next week because there's some forwarding information I'm hoping Marcus and I will get between now and the next couple of weeks, and you and I will talk offline, Marcus. I want to thank certainly all those safety services, as well as our public works, and, and the way the city manager and the command staff all worked together, from what I understood from the floods last week. And so, thank you. Again, just proves that, you know, we're there when we need to be. We have unusual events, but we're prepared for them. And from what I understand, was a very well-oiled machine from all the organizations, including the city manager and all his staff, and the command center, et cetera. So, thank you to everyone. I know the Folsom residents greatly appreciate it. Hope that doesn't happen again, but we know it does. So, our job is to see how we can minimize whatever we can minimize. And, but just know that our services are there when, when they are needed. So, again, Everett, thank you to you and your folks. And Commander, if you'd share, as well as Chief out there, if you could share with your troops, and Brian, the rest of your people, everybody involved, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, with that, again, we'll give the update from Washington, D.C. in the next meeting. And so, I'll adjourn the meeting at 7:10. Good evening.
Thanks for your tip-off on peace.